Good evening. Today is Tuesday, September 6th. We'd like to welcome everyone to Welcome everyone to our school board meeting. The time is 6:11. We apologize for the delay. Board members present, all board members are present in the boardroom, including members Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Holloman, Higgins, Donley, and Bellamy. Our superintendent, Dr. Jarrett Bryant, is in the boardroom along with Ellie Shaw, our Student Advisory Board Representative. Welcome back Ellie from a long summer. We also have our staff that are in the boardroom. At this time, I'd like for Ellie to do the pledge and the land acknowledgement.
On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude for the sacred ancestral lands of the Denina people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, facilities, and schools are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout generations. We are grateful for the opportunity to grow, learn, work, and create educational communities on the sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and resilience of us indigenous peoples. Chanon.
Thank you. Thank you Ellie. And that brings us to the approval of our agenda. Moved, it's been moved in second to approve? Any, yes, Member Donley?
I would move to move memo number 23 on the consent agenda to the action items agenda.
Okay, we have Member Donley would like to move item six, which is memorandum number 23. He would like to pull it, which would automatically put it under action. Is there a second for him to do that? Oh, second. Thank you. Moved and so the, it's been moved in second to amend the agenda by pulling item six and moving it to item F, one, F2 probably. Thank you. Yes.
Just a point of order, just for the future, I don't think taking something off the consent agenda even requires a second, because by its very nature, the consent agenda is something that's going to receive unanimous consent.
Yeah.
So just
And that's a good point.
Maybe we could research that, just so we know the proper procedure.
It's a good point. And so we'll do that for the future. How about that? Right now, we have a motion and a second to move item number six under consent agenda to an action item. Is there any objection to that? All right, seeing none, that item is moved. Now we're back to the main motion of approving the agenda as amended. So now we are ready, can I get a motion to, we have the motion, we're back to the motion to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second to approve the agenda as amended? We've moved the item, now we're approving the agenda. Can I get a second?
Oh, Sacramento President.
Okay, thank you. Any opposition to move, to accepting the agenda, approving the agenda as it is amended? All right, thank you very much. And that brings us to our community reports. We do not have a military report, but we do have our student today, Ms. Shaw.
Hi. For those who don't know, my name is Ellie Shaw, and I'm the president of SAB, or the Student Advisory Board. SAB is a group of students from across the district who meet once a month to discuss different topics, ideas, and any other things brought to us as representatives of each high school and middle school. We have our first meeting of the school year next week on Tuesday, September 13th, from 8:15 a.m. to 10:15 a.m. in this very boardroom. Here, we will introduce new, introduce SAB to new delegates, go through the constitution, and meet the new and returning delegates of SAB. This meeting will be high schoolers only, as we invite the middle school delegates to the meetings in a few months. I am super excited to be able to lead such a great group of people, and I can't wait to see what we do this school year.
All right, thank you. Thank you Ellie. Any questions for Ellie? We do make time for questions for Ellie, if anybody's got any. All right, thank you. We're glad you're here Ellie. So that brings us to item C on our agenda, which is our goal monitoring. And, and we, this, tonight, we will do a presentation with the Alaska Reads Act, which has been on board members' minds. We are still awaiting for the data from the state so that we can continue with our goal monitoring. So tonight, as a fill-in, we will be doing a presentation on the Alaska Reads Act, Science of Reading. Specifically, the act itself.
Great. Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, Board and community. So as was shared, we're still awaiting some data on our standardized assessments that we'll report on next month. So in the interim, we'll be giving a presentation on the Alaska Reads Act. This was an interesting legislative session, and there were a number of positive things that occurred for education. And I would say one example of that would be the bipartisan effort to pass the Alaska Reads Act. I know there have been a number of questions by board members about the act, so we're excited to give you a presentation on what the act means for Alaska, and especially what it means for ASD. So with that said, I'll kick it off to my colleagues.
Good evening. To the board president and members, thank you for allowing us to share about what we know so far about the Alaska Reads Act, and how ASD is aligned to it, and the science of reading. In April, the state hosted the Alaska Science of Reading Symposium. This was a state event, and all educators were invited from around the state. There were over 1,000 people who attended this event, and it really was the kickoff event for the state to begin their journey supporting the science of reading. So what is the science of reading? This is a body of research that is now considered settled science, and it provides the empirical evidence with how the brain learns how to read. This research doesn't tell a teacher exactly what to do, however, it does share what best instructional practices are that lend to improved outcomes for students. It does say that explicit systematic instruction in phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension is necessary. So basically, this research shares what works and what doesn't work. So the Alaska Reads Act legislation was first introduced around October of 2021. It went through many iterations until it was finally passed in May of this year. ASD was actively involved in this process, in the passing of this law, and many staff members, including myself, testified throughout this process. So this legislation supports four main areas of education. It expands universal pre-K programs. The state is in the process of developing a state reading program. Its whole goal and focus is on improving the state's reading scores, and it supports a virtual education plan. For the reporting requirements, reports will expand to include the state, community, and parents. Today, we're going to focus on the third bullet, the district reading improvement component, and how it relates to our ASD's reading practices. The State Department has developed a strategic plan for reading, which includes the requirements of the Alaska Reads Act, and provides further support in reading across the state. This plan will focus on supporting schools so that all students read at grade level by the end of third grade. There are six areas of the plan. We will look at these six areas and relate it to what we do here in ASD. The first strategy is professional development, and the states and the state reads, says, "If we provide professional development in the science of reading for teachers, paraprofessionals, and leaders, then adults will have strong skills for teaching evidence-based reading, and reading proficiency will increase for students." Within ASD, professional development is a strong component and is aligned to the science of reading. ASD had its first new teacher academy prior to the school start. We had over 200 new teachers trained on the mission and our curriculum. We will continue training these new teachers and our existing teachers throughout the school year. Our instructional coaches also conduct trainings at their sites based on school needs. Throughout the school year, there are many training opportunities to build knowledge and understanding around the science of reading, which includes which includes the instructional coaches training, the principal IC partnership meetings, and our MTSS leadership meetings. We have a trainer of trainers model, so we continually train our instructional coaches to support their buildings. The second strategy the state is providing is evidence-based materials. And they say, "If we provide support with evidence-based reading curriculum materials, then teachers and paraprofessionals will have evidence-based tools to use, and reading proficiency will increase for students." In our school district, we have an aligned evidence-based curriculum, which is our National Geographic Reach for Reading. We also have our priority plans, which ensure that alignment to the science and the standards. And we use our instructional routine template cards, which enhance our program by providing that explicit instruction. Along with, we also teach Hagerty, which focuses on that phonological awareness, which we all know is extremely important. For our Tier Two materials, those supplemental support materials, we use our K1 Star Binder, Phonics for Reading, SIPs, and our Tier Two digital pieces. These are in support of what we teach during our Tier One instruction. If you look on the state website, some of these interventions are also supported on their website, like Phonics for Reading. The third bucket is early lean reading, early learning. The state says, "If we increase and support early learning access in the state, then more students will have access to high-quality early learning, and students will demonstrate an increased readiness for schools." ASD is aligning the pre-K programs with kindergarten. Pre-K also teaches the Hagerty Phonological Awareness Program. There will be an alignment with the Fast Bridge Universal Screening between pre-K and kindergarten, and there are now more opportunities for students to attend preschool in our district. The fourth strategy is providing a framework for success. If we provide support to schools to implement effective frameworks, then adults will have increased evidence-based practices to support all students with reading, and reading proficiency will increase for students. ASD's framework includes our instructional coaches at the building level, again, to provide that professional learning and support for teachers in their instructional practices. We have assessment teams to support the universal screening that happens three times a year, that helps support data and our decisions around instruction. And then we have our district support, which is our coordinators and lead team that help drive that professional learning and support in schools. The fifth budget bucket is the science of reading resources, data, and communication. If we provide a system of communication to include evidence-based reading data, reports, feedback, and resources, then stakeholders will have input and knowledge regarding reliable evidence-based resources and implementation data, and reading proficiency will increase for students. As a district, we have been accumulating and continue accumulating our science of reading resources for staff and families. We continually add new resources as we learn more. We have done a lot of work with data and sharing out that data with schools. Our MTSS model is dependent upon data and provides the structure to support the needs of students. In light of the Alaska Reads Act, we are continuing to work on our communication that will share student learning and progress with parents. The sixth bucket is teacher preparation. And it reads, "If we support and require proficiency on science of reading practices, then teachers and administrators will have the proficiency to deliver evidence-based reading instruction and leadership to improve reading, and reading proficiency will increase for students." ASD is supporting the science of reading and evidence-based instruction by training the new educators, as I mentioned before, through that new teacher academy, and the continued professional development throughout the school year. ASD has also been working collaboratively with UAA to ensure upcoming educators learn about the science of reading and evidence-based practices. We, this next slide highlights where we are and where we need to go in relation to student learning. We presented this data last spring. We know that these Fast Bridge assessments measure discrete skills that require a level of automaticity to progress to that next level of reading acquisition. We also know from many data sets that when our reading program is implemented with integrity, student outcomes improve. So that last slide was really looking at student learning. And now this slide is a snapshot of how students are being instructed. This data was from the last year's implementation snapshot. When we conducted a snapshot, we are observing during the reading block to see how the instruction is aligned to the plans and the science of reading. Fifty-five percent of classroom teachers were teaching one of those five components of reading. We know we can do better than that. Seventy-eight percent of classroom teachers were using district materials. The goal is all teachers using district materials because we know that these materials are aligned to the science of reading, and they're evidence-based. We also know the mobility rate in our district is high, and by providing a consistent approach to instruction for all students, then we know that we have students being able to have the instruction they need for that science and that alignment. And third, a big piece that we look at is that students are actively and cognitively engaged in their learning. Students' brains should be working during that reading block. So this would look like all students responding, instead of only one answering a question, and maybe a group working together on a "we do" part of that instruction after it has been modeled from the teacher. So we know that we can also improve in that fifty-five percent of our classroom teachers were utilizing some type of engagement strategies. So we hope to support that engagement of all students and their learning. So for our next steps, this next year, we will continue to focus on curriculum implementation and instruction. We have our first snapshot scheduled for September 26th through October 7th. We have focused trainings on our K2 phonics lessons using the instructional routines and the Hagerty lessons. And schools have started their WIN groups this week. So based on this data, we know where we are and where we need to go. We'll continue to focus on professional learning. We are excited to have the instructional coaches back in their roles, supporting this work. We'll provide learning walks to support the job-embedded learning around evidence-based instructional practices and the science of reading. Schools have monthly data meetings to determine if any instructional shifts need to be made to support students. And on September 22nd and 23rd, we will have our first of three of our MTSS data meetings to do that deep dive into school data to determine those next steps at that school level. So the science of reading, people ask why, why the science of reading? Well, it really goes back to that student growth, right? The students tell us, the science tells us how to get there. If we want to improve student outcomes, then it starts with us. And this next picture is an example of a resource that we added this year. You'll each get one of these Science of Reading defining guides. This guide was produced by the Reading League, and some of the top educational researchers contributed to this guide, like Louisa Moats. This resource has been shared with instructional coaches, building staff, and principals, and buildings can also share this resource with parents. And that concludes the presentation, and if any board members have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. I'm seeing some interest. Let's start with Member Jacobs. We'll go to Higgins, and then Holloman.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the presentation and the update. When the board met earlier this year for its retreat, we discussed informally a couple of ideas. One, expanding and thinking outside the box as to an increasing opportunity for professional development, more than what we have in the past, given the urgency that's there. And the other item was adding an interim goal related to adoption and implementation of the curriculum with fidelity, and having that snapshot as an interim measure, so we can have something to shoot for this year. I'm curious from the administration if there's any update on those two items. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Through the president, Member Jacobs, we are thinking through potential adjustments as it relates to the interim goal. And as I shared at the retreat, I still feel strongly that additional time for professional development for teachers is something I'm very passionate about and interested in exploring more. And of course, there are some implications with the current AA agreement and other things that make that more of a long-term goal than something immediate.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Member Higgins, your question?
Oh, am I on now? Maybe so. And I appreciate the presentation. And I think the issue of phonics being there should be indisputable now for all the evidence that is out there. But what hits me is the number of staff who are not following through with directions and the concerns. And when I talk to them, they, they give me a number of different reasons, and I'm wondering what you're hearing. Their concerns are, you know, we want to measure progress, advancement. And they're concerned that the reading material isn't appropriate in third grade, let's say, for kids that are reading at first grade level. Or if they're in fifth grade level, if they wanted them to advance, other than just spending the win time, they're giving them different material. And that's, that's a concern to me. I think our goal is that all kids are advancing, not just trying to teach to the test for the, for the reading proficiency. And I'm wondering if you're hearing the same thing, or how we might respond to that issue? Because I've had teachers crying about the issue of having second graders, second grade, having first graders that, you know, in class, they couldn't know the output better, didn't know, because of the pandemic, they were behind. And they're being told, "Teach with fidelity," given the second grade reading material anyway, and they don't feel like they're helping. I've heard that from principals, I've heard that from teachers. So the numbers are not surprising here, because my goal has always been all kids are advancing, and not just trying to get the grade level for the test up. So I guess, I'm wondering if you're hearing that, how are we responding to that type of concern? Because I do believe it's legitimate, and I do believe that they're telling me this with sincerity, that they care about kids, and they want all kids advancing. They want to find a better way to advance them when they're behind, and sticking with that reading material in second grade is not helping the kids who are at kindergarten level reading, okay? And, and so they're, if they're going outside of the materials being provided, it's because of their commitment to help every kid grow. And I'm wondering how you respond, or what do we, how do we respond to teachers who passionately are telling us that, and some principals?
And I don't know who, I know there was a response in Board Connect, but I will leave it up to Dr. Bryant, who responds here today.
Correct. So we did answer a portion of that concern in Board Connect. If there's anything additional that my colleagues would like to share, you're welcome to do so.
Thank you. Through the president to Member Higgins, thank you for the question. Excellent question, because as our mission states, right, we make sure all students are successful. So that comes through our MTSS infrastructure and our instructional coaches really helping teachers figure out exactly what do groups of students need. And we have many different, well, first, the first level is there is an obligation for every student to learn grade-level standards. And again, we have a curriculum that's aligned to those standards that all students, for consistency and standard sake, all students need to get a level of grade-level learning. So that's the first basis. And then from that, you differentiate. So as students that maybe aren't on grade level, you're going to change that instruction to meet their need, to help them catch up. It may be something you do in the core. We have what's called our Intensified Plan, which all schools, instructional coaches, and principals know. It's available to them. We have our instruction We have our Intensified Plan that helps that core for those students that are needing catch up, that pairs with the WIN to help them catch up. But then we also have that differentiation for students that are higher and can then utilize materials that enrich them and help them grow from where they are. So it is doable within a building, but it's all through your MTSS infrastructure and how you manage your resources and the supports for students to make sure you meet everybody's needs.
Thank you. Member Holloman, did you have a question? No? Okay. Member Lessons, we'll come to you.
Sure, I actually have a number, but I'll just put one in line right now. You know, looking at your presentation, thank you very much. One, one area that I don't see anything, and then I realize it's maybe beyond the district's scope, is how do we teach parents, how do we partner with parents to support their children at this time? We can work with our teachers within our schools, but how do we translate, expand to broaden that network of support that we can offer to, you know, a child? So that those practices, those best practices can be practiced, you know, when you're sitting at the kitchen table or reading at bedtime or having that sort of parent-child, guardian-child back and forth that will support their learning? What can we do better to support parents in that respect?
Sure, and I'm happy to share. I think that's a great point in terms of the parent role when it comes to increasing reading proficiency. I'd even go a step further and think about ways in which we can help our own parents on their journey to achieve literacy, thinking about supports to help them connect their education so that all of our families are empowered with the tools that literacy affords them. If there's anything currently in practice, please feel free to share.
Through the President and to Miss Lessons, I would say that right now, it's site-based and in terms of what they offer for parents. For example, Title I schools have family nights. And at those family nights, they share with parents how to support their kids at home. And so one of the nights would be, or would be the K-1 teachers coming to teach their parents how to support their kids with reading at home. But it is site-based right now and probably something we can work on in terms of making it more universal.
And if I could just add, I think there's lots of opportunities for us to partner with local organizations that are doing the literacy thing. I mean, they are working with parents. They're working in our schools with our kids. And I think part of, one of, part of the mosaic of reading and the science of reading is to give everybody those foundational skills, at least awarenesses, if not skills, so that we can create that safety net. So I think that's an excellent question, as well as maybe something we can maybe focus on even more as we build our partnerships. Yes, Member Wilson? It's not working. There it is.
I appreciate Member Jacobs' question about professional development. And thank you, Dr. Bryant, for your response as well, because I continue to hear from teachers and educators that professional development and collaboration opportunities are a key component that is lacking for staff. So I appreciate that focus. That's just my comment. I do have a question. Last school year, I know staffing was quite an issue. Is there an expectation that schools are going to be staffed well enough to give our, the instructional coaches, the opportunity to focus on their primary tasks?
Absolutely. On the site-based level and also at the secondary and elementary levels, we're constantly looking at staffing to ensure that schools have a baseline of staff that they need to implement these ambitious goals. And if they aren't currently staffed for whatever reason, we're looking at all the ways to make sure that we have classroom staff by capable certified individuals in the classroom. It really depends by campus. But at a high level, we know that we can't achieve our reading goals if we don't have adequately staffed classrooms. We are making progress on the staffing front as it relates to teachers. And now we're looking to take it to the next level as it relates to paraprofessional staffing too, because that's another part of the equation.
Thank you. So I think I'm next in the queue. I have just a couple of questions. One, can you talk a little bit about the collaboration that you're doing with UAA? How are we collaborating with them for that early literacy piece? Do we have, or are we working on that still?
It's in progress.
It's in progress. Okay. And then my other question, got too many notes here. I guess I'll stop there for now because I had the same question that Member Lessons had. Okay, so Member Donley, did you have questions? Not right now? Okay. Anybody else have questions? We'll go back around. Member Lessons?
So I was recently informed that DEED, this is more of a higher-up level question, if you can't answer it, then can't answer it. DEED might be working with Colorado, Arkansas, Mississippi, Kentucky to approve sort of a bigger list or set of ELA materials for Alaska. But I looked at Colorado's most recent list, which was approved in May. I haven't looked at the other states. And that Colorado list doesn't include Cengage. Do you have a sense of when DEED will have a list of approved curricular materials yet? And if so, are we confident that Cengage will be part of that approved list?
I have not been engaged with DEED as it relates to that list. That's certainly something that we can look further into so we can give a more definite timeline.
Okay. Any other questions for our staff? So the $30, I want to talk a little bit about the, I think we got $30, right? $30 is going to be next year for literacy. Is that right? No, we're not, we got .5, we got something from .5. Okay. So that .5, have we discussed yet, Dr. Bryant, how are we gonna? I heard more preschools? I think I heard that somewhere.
So we're looking at making sure that we have expansive access to high-quality preschools. We have a number of preschools already here, or a number of pre-K programs already here in ASD. The one thing that the Reading Act grants districts is that .5 funding for per pupil. Obviously, that's not enough to cover an entire pre-K classroom. A number of districts, they leverage a head start in combination with their own preschool programming and they're able to swing it. In ASD, it's a little bit more complicated, just given the numbers of pre-Ks that we have in the system. We also have to think about grade three pre-Ks versus grade four pre-K. And there are a lot of moving pieces. And for that reason, we don't have a firm recommendation for what we'll do with the additional funding. So we can't commit to more preschools, but know that we're looking into it to make sure that all students have access to a high-quality preschool. If that makes sense, whether it's through seats or through additional programs.
Okay. That's great. You'll bring that back later. That's great. All right. Other?
Yeah, this is sort of another question. What, what sort of data? I mean, we are looking at student data multiple times a year. And I guess I assume that we're also looking at the efficacy of our instructional coaches, our summer school interventions. I mean, how are we going to compare, how do we know what's effective with all of these different sort of applications of funding towards these different initiatives? How do we know what, what's the best thing for our, what's the highest ROI?
I think one thing that was really interesting as I toured our summer schools was I got to see not just the instruction to our students during the summer, but also the ongoing snapshots, just small, easy-to-administer assessments that provide us data to inform. One, the day-to-day instruction of the teacher. But two, the efficacy of something like a summer school overall. So that's something that we're actively monitoring, especially now that we have a new standardized test for Alaska in the fold. Now is a perfect time to really understand how we can leverage our data to tell the Board, hey, summer school programming is going really well. We want to expand it or be, maybe we need to focus more on those during school time or during the school year interventions. So that's something that we are looking at, especially with new data at our fingertips.
Okay. All right, Member Lessons?
All right. I came, I came ready to read or talk about reading. So I think I saw that last week-ish, NAEP scores were released for nine-year-olds nationwide. And I wonder, and it sort of showed declines in reading and math and widening gaps. But do we know anything about ASD participants yet? Or is that data simply just a federal snapshot?
I believe it's a snapshot that, oh, sorry, Dr. Stock, would you like to chime in? Okay. So yeah, I am aware that the data is available and my understanding is that NAEP is conducted by doing small sample sizes in groups of students across the nation. So in terms of Alaska-specific data, Dr. Stock, do you have specific insights you'd like to share?
I was just going to share through the President that we always administer, we're a big part of that test in the state, but they do not provide state, district-level data on NAEP. So we never can sort that out specifically with the NAEP test. We can only do our own linking studies and looking at how NAEP scores relate to our own AK-Star scores. The last time we really looked at that, there was a fairly close alignment between the proficiency rating of difficulty on NAEP and the proficiency ratings that Alaska used. So there is some similarity there, but we don't get specific ASD data.
Okay. Seeing no more questions, we thank you guys for your time and your, and the information. And we didn't get to meet Dr. Beltran.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Diana Beltran, and I am the new Senior Director for Teaching and Learning.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Bethore. All right. So that, we moving back to our agenda, that puts us at our public comment. Item D on the agenda. And this is the, again, we'd like to welcome everyone to the first, to our meeting. This is our first opportunity on our agenda to hear from the public. The Board has set aside one-hour, one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting for public comment. Public comments in excess of the hour will be heard at the second opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. Comments may also be submitted in writing, and they will be attached to the agenda. So during public comment, Board members will not answer specific questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is the public's time to speak and the Board's time to listen. The School Board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings through their comments. However, to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. So as you entered the boardroom, there was a blue and white sheet that's entitled, "Simply Welcome to the ASD Ed Center." And in that sheet, you will find audience participation and the rules of the boardroom. And I won't read them to you, but I do, I will, as a President of the Board, I have to enforce those rules as well as keep order and structure to our meetings. The ASD conducts public meetings under rubbers rules of order, and that's a set of rules. And we still struggle to get it just perfect. It is a set of rules that helps us keep our meetings orderly, and they've been around since the 1800s. These rules require the Board and the public to be civil and respectful of each other's opinions and statements. And as I stated, as a President of the Board, it is my duty to enforce the rules of civility and decorum as such and consistent with rubbers rules of order. I have the authority to rule any speaker out of order for violation of these rules or fail to conduct themselves in a civil manner. And I do call your attention to the handout that's at the front of, as you come into the boardroom. And with that, we give priority, student testimony, at least status to our students. And we have two tonight, and we're excited. And so Thomas Kushner, Thomas, are you here? Oh, he's going to be on the phone? So is Thomas, Thomas? Okay, we'll come back, we'll come back. Thomas is going to join us on the phone. But in the boardroom, we have Rose. And Rose, is it Konstantin? Konstantin, thank you. Welcome, Rose. Can you pull that mic closer to you? Yes.
Hi, my name is Rose Konstantin. I'm in fifth grade at Inlet View. I live on H Street. I've been going to Inlet View since kindergarten. I love the school and I think it's an amazing school, but it could get better and we could do that with a replacement. I think it's really important to have a clean, safe learning environment. Sorry. Our orchestra is strong and we have done a lot in our, in the building, but we, that we have now. And we have so many memories, but we can make more with the new school. We also need a new library. A lot of, we have a sort of small library. I love to read, so I would love a new library. The, we have a multipurpose room, which is the gym. We have our gym class. It's a cafeteria and it's in the assembly room. It's small and has many uses. We need a larger one and separate places for lunch. Inlet View isn't just a school, it's a community. And I don't just mean my class, but the whole school. I know so many teachers and staff and they know me. I love our building. Thank you for having me here.
Thank you, Rose. You did a great job. Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to check for Mr. Thomas. He's not there. Okay. We'll keep looking for Thomas. Next, we have Mr. Danny Konstantin. I bet I got it wrong that time.
Thank you very much. And thank you, members, for giving me an opportunity. I'm just here to support funding for Inlet View Replacement. Yeah, again, my name is Danny Konstantin. I've lived downtown and I've lived in Alaska over 50 years. I guess my goal around the Inlet View school is just really to just ensure that the students and the educators that work there have a safe and healthy place to work and to learn and to really just to do their best work. And I, that's what I think, I think that an Inlet View Replacement would help achieve that goal, but that's really what I'm looking for. And as a parent and as a community member, I see the school, I'm in the school, and you really can't miss the needs that this building has, the maintenance needs, the safety needs. So I see that. And I just urge you, please don't delay this funding because delay has costs and delay has impacts on the community, on the neighbors, and on the students and the educators. So again, just I urge you to support funding for Inlet View Replacement. Thanks.
Thank you. Next via phone, we have Danielle Kemp. We don't see him in the queue. What about in-person, Eileen Foil Saft? Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening, School Board and Dr. Bryant. Welcome to Alaska. My name is Eileen Foil, and I'm here to support the draft resolution that was proposed by, I believe, Kelly Lessons, Margot Bellamy, in reference to training our community on how to be smart around storage of weapons or firearms. So here's my spiel. As you know, the school community provides an ideal venue in providing awareness and training in everything we want our community members to model and to learn for our young people. I am a retired teacher, mom, grandma, part-time sub-teacher and caring community member. The resolution in front of us, the smart, be smart, sorry, promoted by Margot Bellamy, Kelly sorry, promoted by Margot Bellamy, Kelly Lessons, and Dora Wilson, is one in which I am here to testify in favor of tonight. My goal is to enlist your help in encouraging responsible gun ownership in our state, where the firearms do play a huge role in our culture. Schools are the central point in our communities. Every year, hundreds of children under 18 in our nation gain access to firearms and unintentionally, accidentally shoot themselves or someone else. Firearms are the leading cause of death among children and teens in our great state of Alaska. Gun violence costs Alaskan taxpayers $44.5 million each year. As a collective, I firmly believe we agree that the safety of students, all of our students, is our highest priority. While serving as a teacher, I know it remains for me. As a mom and grandma, I feel compelled to speak now on how we can address this both delicate and tragic topic. The resolution in consideration is a safety initiative entitled Be Smart. Its framework encourages educators, parents, guardians, and significant adult figures to normalize the conversations about gun safety and importantly, take responsible actions that can prevent gun deaths and injuries. Storing firearms unloaded, locked, and separated from ammunition can and will save children's and teens' lives. The acronym Be Smart represents: Secure All Guns in Homes and Vehicles, Model Responsible Behavior Around Guns, Ask About the Presence of Unsecured Guns in Others Homes, Recognize the Role of Guns in Suicide.
T, you have 30 seconds.
Tell your friends, neighbors, community members, young people, and children to remain smart. In summation, an education program is available to our community through Be Smart. I urge you to consider providing these pivotal keys toward keeping our community healthy and thriving. I appreciate your time and consideration and would like to piggyback onto a point earlier in reference to the science of reading. If we want to improve student outcomes, it starts with us. If we want to provide, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Irene Bortnick. Oh, there you are. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you for this opportunity to testify. I'm also here to testify in support of the proposed Be Smart addition to the Anchorage School District. I too am a mother, a grandmother, and a retired Anchorage School District kindergarten teacher. One of the lessons I taught was that if a child found matches, a knife, or a gun, never to touch it, but to find a trusted adult and show it to them. However, the onus for keeping children safe should be on the adults. Firearms are the leading cause of death among children and teens in the United States as well as in Alaska. 10% of adults in Alaska live in a home with an unlocked and loaded weapon. Other children may visit those homes, which means even more children are potentially in danger. Suicide rates are high across the state, including among ASD students. Alaskans use guns for hunting, and no one is suggesting that they shouldn't have them. However, more needs to be done to ensure that guns, whether loaded or unloaded, are kept away from children and teenagers. People are worried about children's mental health. One way to support mental health is to ensure feelings of safety. The percentage of Anchorage School District children who feel safe at school decreased sharply in the last year. Children who do not feel safe cannot learn and thrive. Secure firearm storage is essential to keeping children safe, both physically and mentally. The Be Smart program works to educate families and promote safe gun storage. The Anchorage School District can help by using and sharing this information with families. Please vote in support of the proposed resolution for safe and secure gun storage in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, we have Maura Smith. Welcome, Maura. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent Bryant, and members of the board. I'd like to start off by thanking you and the staff for your public service. I know that it comes at a lot of sacrifice personally, and I really want to thank you for the time that you spend on our schools and on our community. I am appearing this evening as a resident of South Edition and as a parent of Mr. Sosa's school, Inlet View Elementary, and a daughter who goes to Mr. Gustafson's school, West High School. I am represent, representing myself today. I have two main points, and they're relatively simple. The first is the highest and best use of the school bond debt reimbursement funds is to make smart, long-term fiscal investments in the capital needs of our school district, which are many. Second, consistent with the six-year capital improvement plan and the district, district's core value of safety, I am asking you to use approximately $30 million of that school bond debt reimbursement money to fund Inlet View Elementary's replacement. Now, why should you do this? And there's two reasons. First, deficits come and go. I have lived in this community for many years. My grandma taught here 50 years ago. I have a lot of history in this community, and I know that we've seen pink slips come, we've seen pink slips go. I am not undermining the importance of the statutory requirement to balance the budget. But I do think that the shifting sands on a state foundation formula basis will change as this year, especially the school year goes on. But what has not changed and is not in flux is the fact that Inlet View is in decline. Our children are not safe. They have no sprinkler system. They have drainage and sewage on their playground. The school does not meet the ASD elementary educational specs for elementary schools. And Inlet View has topped the list with the highest number of educational inadequacies for many, many years. That's not going to change. And failing to fund Inlet View at this time would call into question the district, district's core value of ensuring that all schools and departments will be safe and supportive. Failing to fund Inlet View at this time would contravene the district's six-year capital improvement plan. My second reason is I know the priority that everyone on this board places on fostering, excuse me, a culture of high expectations. As the only international baccalaureate school in the school district and an extremely high-performing school that is gaining population, it does not make sense to shut Inlet View down, and that's the alternative that we face if we fail to fund it at this time. Let's fund the school and allow this remarkable community to not only survive, but thrive. Thank you very much.
And thank you very much. Next, we have in-person, Kevin McCoy. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to appear and testify. My name is Kevin McCoy, and I have lived at the corner of 11th Avenue and N Street downtown for 32 years. I'm here to speak in support of the Inlet View Elementary School Replacement Project. You know these facts. The school is 57 years old. It's falling apart. It doesn't even come close to meeting the security needs and safety needs that we require of our schools now. And it, it needs to be replaced. I have reviewed the plans that are under consideration to replace the school with a new building on the south side of the lot. I fully support these plans. First, the plans focus on the children by putting their needs first. Second, the project will improve my neighborhood. It will increase the value of homes in my neighborhood. It will make it a more attractive place and, and a, a better place to live. It will reduce traffic congestion around the school. It is unbelievable how the traffic goes around the school where children are walking. The new plan will eliminate that problem and make it a safer place to go. Finally, it'll solve the long-term water problems that are, that are plaguing the south side of the lot. That's an ongoing problem. Some of the people that live there have their basins flooded, and it's a problem for them. This new project will eliminate that. So what I would like you to do is to use the school bond reimbursement funds to make a long-term investment in the Anchorage schools, and you can do that with the Anchorage, the Inlet View Replacement Project. It is strongly supported by parents, and it is strongly supported by most of the neighbors in the neighborhood. We've already spent $3.3 million in designing and planning this project over the last two years. It's time to move forward with the construction now. For these reasons, I'm going to ask you to use the appropriations that are available to you to start this project immediately. I recognize, I sat here through the work session, and I recognize that you face funding problems. This is the way, or fiscal problems, and this is the way I look at it. I'm 72 years old. I was in elementary school a long time ago. At that time, there was a school board, and there were parents, and there were challenges faced. I'm sure they had fiscal challenges, and they met those challenges, and I believe we can as well. So I, I thank you for listening to me, and thank you for your public service on this board.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Next, we have in-person, Mary Geddes. Welcome, Mary. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Mary Geddes. I would like to begin by just expressing my appreciation to all of you. You've undertaken such a great responsibility to care for all of our children, to provide for their future. I'm humbled by your service. I appreciate your time and your energies dealing with these complex problems. I'm going to use my time to just make two brief requests. First, please don't use the state's reimbursement for the city's school-related bond debt to do anything other than pay the very necessary costs for school district infrastructure. Speaking as a taxpayer, we need good schools to attract and keep businesses and to grow a better economy. A tax holiday, it just won't get us where we need to be as a community. And that's coming from a person who's been paying Anchorage taxes, property taxes, for 30 years at this point. My second request is do recognize and embrace and fund the need, the great need for an Inlet View replacement building. I live about a half a block, maybe a house away from the school. You could say that I'm disinterested because I don't have children in school. But it is very much our neighborhood's lifeblood. It's a magnet for young families. And it's a critical piece, really, if you think about it this way, for downtown vitality and stability in the long run. It's just crucial. So thank you for listening. Thank you for your support. And I look forward to your support of the Inlet View Replacement Project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Geddes. Next, in-person, Seth Anderson. Welcome, Seth. You have three minutes.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to talk this evening. I'm Seth Anderson. I have children at Inlet View Elementary School, and we live one block away from the school. Professionally, I'm a structural engineer and real estate developer. I'm here because it's important to my family and neighbors that safety and operational failures at Inlet View are addressed. The age school has many unsafe conditions, and inadequate building systems are a distraction to learning, teaching, and retaining neighborhood students. I understand that the state legislator provided money to the Anchorage School District, essentially backfilling this year's school bond, including and specifically for replacement of Inlet View. I support using the state funding as intended when allocated by the legislature. Western demographics, as consultants to ASD, has determined that Inlet View is the most utilized school in the district. It's also the third lowest facility rating, low being in the poorest condition. The consultants advised that the neighborhoods around Inlet View are also the most likely to see growth in additions, additional student population in the future. The summary of their recommendations puts replacement of Inlet View as the top priority for capital improvements. I have a couple of concerns if funding for the school is not used now. One is that if the school is not replaced, I don't see a plan or discussion for capital improvements at Inlet View to address life safety deficiency to the building or the school grounds. Replacement of Inlet View has been on the capital improvement plan for over a decade, and there are no projects identified to make the school safe, address HVAC issues, and extend the school's useful life. And second, if the state allocated funding is not used to replace Inlet View now, we will be essentially wasting over $3 million of public money already spent in planning and design of the school replacement. If the project is delayed, planning and design fees will be duplicated. Construction will only be more expensive each year it's delayed, and there's no guarantee money will be available in the future when we need to replace the school. We have the money available right now. The school is designed, permitting is underway, and the school is ready for construction. Inlet View services a diverse demographic of students, and it's the first and only IB International Baccalaureate Elementary School in the entire state. By keeping the existing school operational during construction of a new school, the administration has developed a plan to keep these students together as a cohort and the IB program intact during construction of a new school. I understand that ASD has many conflicting capital needs. However, Inlet View has been on the top of the capital improvement plans for too long to ignore. The money has been provided by the state, and now is the time to do this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do think there are a few people that came in after the list to speak was pulled. So if there's an opportunity at the end or time left, and you're willing, there might be some additional people that want to speak.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, we have Ava Gardner. Eva, sorry. Eva? Is she there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Eva Gardner. I'm a community member. I actually have a kindergartner who just started at Benali Montessori, but I am calling in tonight to testify about Inlet View. I understand the legislature gave ASD up to $100 million in school debt reimbursement, and half of that was intended for the Inlet View rebuild. Please use that money to build a new school. You might be wondering why I care, since we're not even an Inlet View family. And the reason is because we would have been an Inlet View family. Back in 2020, when we were looking ahead to being ASD parents, we decided to move into our current neighborhood primarily so that we could be in the Inlet View school zone. We had two little kids with a third in the works, and we were excited to send them all to that school. We'd heard great things about the community, staff, and teachers. We knew the building had some problems, but we didn't think they could really be that bad. Earlier this year, in 2022, it was finally time to register our oldest kid for kindergarten. We arranged a tour of Inlet View, thinking it would just be a checkmark. You know, one more step of due diligence before we sent our kid, something to make us feel good about our decision to move into that neighborhood for that school. But to our surprise, it wasn't a checkmark. It was a deal breaker. The building is dingy. The classrooms are dim and overcrowded. In our short visits, we could see that the classrooms are way over capacity. We heard stories of sewage leaking onto the playground. We had very real questions about the building's safety. It just didn't feel like a place we wanted to send our son, especially for his first introduction to learning. We felt terrible having that reaction to Inlet View, because it had nothing to do with the teachers and staff, and they're the heart of the school. We're not snobs. We don't think our kids need fancy new buildings in order to succeed at school. But when we visited Benali Montessori and our son got a spot there in the spring lottery, it made the decision really easy. Why wouldn't we want our son at a school that has the full package? Great teachers and staff, plus a newer building that actually has enough space for its students, that's actually safe for them to learn? School should be a place of light and peace. Physical environment for learning matters. The students of Inlet View deserve better than what they have now. You already have the planning and design for a new building. You spent $3 million getting ready to break ground. Now you have the money from the legislature to make it happen. Please use that money to replace Inlet View. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Let's see, in-person, we have Hannah Brewster. Welcome, Hannah. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, and thank you for your service on the school board. I know that that's a tremendous amount of work, and I'm very grateful. My name is Hannah Brewster. I have a brand-new kindergartner at Inlet View Elementary and a three-year-old who'll start there in two more years. Inlet View is our neighborhood school, and we've lived in the area for 10 years. I'm here tonight to ask for your support of the Inlet View community by allocating the school bond reimbursement funds to the replacement of the school. Inlet View is one of the oldest schools in the district and has topped the district's maintenance priority list for over a decade. It's desperately in need of security upgrades and is currently of security upgrades, and is currently educating 60 more students than it was designed for. Every time we read about the unfathomable tragedies in schools elsewhere in the country, delaying security upgrades seems more and more absurd. While I'm still catching up on the details of this project, it's clear to me that this project has been ready to proceed for several years. The funding's now available, and it's time to make it happen. These funds should be used to make long-term, sustainable investments in our community, and the need, the support, and the funds are all here, and the time is now. Thank you.
And thank you very much. And our last speaker for this hour is Moira Gallagher. Gallagher, welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Dr. Bryant, and all of the school board members. My name is Moira Sullivan Gallagher. I live on M Street, just south of Inlet View, and I am here to speak on that issue. I have two very small kids. They don't go to Inlet View yet, but I hope they will. They are four and one. I was the South Edition Community Council president for four years, from 2017 until 2021. I grew up in South Edition. I went to Inlet View. My parents grew up in South Edition, and they are in their 70s, and they went to Inlet View in the same building that is there now, in case you were wondering about any of my bona fides within the neighborhood. I am very familiar with the issues at play here. I am very familiar with the issues within the neighborhood, and I was also asked to serve on the Building Design Committee late in the process in order to represent the neighbors, particularly those on M Street, just south of the school, who had major concerns about the design that was originally presented last fall. I am here to tell you that I also had concerns about that design when it was presented. I didn't love a two-story school. I didn't love some of the traffic patterns that were planned. But I had an opportunity to express those concerns within the BDC, as did many of my neighbors, and many of those concerns were addressed in the new design that came out. Not all of them. I don't think it's a perfect design, and not everybody in the neighborhood thinks that it's a perfect design. But I do believe that we shouldn't let perfect be the enemy of the good here, and we've put a lot of work, a lot of time, and of course, a lot of money into the design that has come out. I've been involved in dozens of public processes over the years, from the South Edition Neighborhood Plan to the Design Committee for Frontier Land Park. No public process is perfect. You can never include all people, no matter how hard you try, and even if you did, you cannot create a design that would make everybody happy. There will always be people in a community who felt that they weren't heard, no matter how hard you try to make a process inclusive, and I think that that's what happened here. It was an inclusive process, but nobody is, nobody is going to feel 100% heard. There will always be people in a community who do not like the outcome. I strongly urge you to not go back to the drawing board on the Inlet View design. You have an opportunity to move forward and to carry the ball forward on a design that is actually excellent. It is strongly supported in the neighborhood, and any new design is going to have its detractors as well. Redesigning the new school would be a tragic waste of time. Safety and lives truly are at risk here. I also want to talk briefly about the failure of the bond package this year. Why did the bond fail? I'm sure we all have our theories, and there are probably many reasons, but I think we can assume that there was some sticker shock on that bond and feelings of frugality among the population because of rising inflation. We are not a community that votes down bonds historically. We are a community that supports schools, and we are a community that saw a very expensive package and felt we didn't have the money at that time. In that very real sense, I believe using this funding to backfill the bond does represent voter intent in Anchorage. We are a community that supports schools, and so do the people represented here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and that brings us to item E on our agenda. That's our consent agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
It's moved and second, that we approve the consent agenda? Oh, everyone is here today, so we don't, we can do an online vote. Thank you. Hold on a minute. So right now, we are at to approve the consent agenda. The motion is to approve the consent agenda as it is, or as we amended it, actually. So now we are, is there a second? Is there a second to approve? Okay, Miss Member Higgins, thank you. So it's been motioned and second to approve the agenda. Any, please vote, because we have the, we're able to vote. Okay, he needs to just catch him. Oh, and Don. Did you just give us the up or down? And don't forget Ellie. Okay, almost there. And that, that passes, that motion to approve the agenda passes. Seven yays, zero nays. Thank you. And that brings us to our action item. We have one item, which is ASD memorandum number 023. And that was pulled by Member Don Lee. Can I get a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number 023, reallocation of SIRSSA funds for FY '22, 2023, to approve reallocation of unspent SIRSSA act funds as proposed by the administration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved in second to approve. Discussion. Member Don Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, this, this resolution authorizes the expenditure of $4,781,674 for very vague purposes that are lacking in specificity, in my opinion. We're looking at a $60 million hole in our budget coming in the next year. At the work session today, we heard possibilities for closing less than one quarter of that budget gap with the elimination of sixth-grade band orchestra, the elimination of the Ignite program, possibly cutting immersion schools, and these are all very, very painful cuts. Just the Ignite program and band orchestra is about the cost of what this purports to spend this year instead of saving it for next year. I would really appreciate a lot more detail and want more specificity about what the critical staff required to support the district's operations will be or are before I would approve for over $4 million additional to be expended this year, and why do we need to give flexibility for entire remaining money of some discretionary funds we have left over from COVID impact rather than using it to soften the crisis we're facing for next year? Additionally, there's no numbers presented here about enrollment exceeding projections, although I believe that's true, but I would like to see some numbers to show the dollar amount cost of that vis-à-vis the entire $4,781,000 amount this resolution authorizes. The other justification for this $4,700,000 is investment towards high-impact, one-time requirements related to infrastructure audits, analysis on systems that have been disrupted during the pandemic. That's incredibly vague, Madam President. I just think this board should have a lot more information before we authorize 400, almost $5 million. And I would really rather see us authorize like a chunk of money, if these are really essentials and priorities for the administration, to authorize this in bits and pieces to do everything we can to maximize the carryover to soften the load of our huge fiscal gap we're facing next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Don Lee. As I recall, we pulled this at our last meeting. Did we pull this one at our last meeting? Okay. Anyway, I will defer to Dr. Bryant.
Sure, I'm happy to share a few remarks. So to be clear, this item is regarding the repurposing of funds that were allocated for a specific purpose and approved by the board last year, but this is also the result of my inheriting a decision to use ESAR funds on recurring costs. So just to remind the board that a large chunk of our ESAR or SIRSSA dollars are going towards things such as staff. A lot of teachers are being funded from ESAR, for example. So when you're funding a position that is vacant, what happens, and what happened in this case, is that we had $4 million essentially carryover from last year into this year. And to be frank with you, Member Don Lee, I think that we need more time to figure out a plan, and you're absolutely correct that one option could be to save or invest in one-time costs that we're expending this year to soften the blow, if you will, going into next year. But I also want to be clear that these funds do have a spend-down date of next September, so we will need to allocate these funds towards something that's high-impact. And I think there are a number of high-impact, one-time costs that we can invest these funds are, but we need more time to give you specific deliverables. But these were funds that were allocated, were not spent, were carried over, and now we're analyzing the high-impact ways that we can fund it. So one thing that we did want to note in this item is, one, the funds will be used to fund quite a few teaching positions that we need as a result of two things. One is the fact that we have enrollment that's increased at the school level, right? But then, two, I think I lost my train of thought there. Well, the main thing is that, one, we need to fund additional teachers from the ESAR funds due to increased enrollment. So our eyes are on what are the immediate, oh, now I remember. And the reason why we have to fund those additional teachers is because, as a district, we had made a decision to use our holdback last semester for teachers at immersion and other programs. So there are a lot of things that we had to consider that led up to this moment where we have to figure out how do we want to repurpose these dollars from last year into this year. So I just wanted to give that context, if it's helpful, for how we got to this point to where we have this $4 million. And the last thing that I did just want to point out is, as was mentioned earlier today in the budget workshop, one of the things that we will be talking about is how do we leverage ESAR dollars to soften the blow, if you will, when it comes to the deficit. So funds from this $4 million and any funds related to ESAR, SIRSSA are on the table to be used for savings, but keep in mind that this does need to be spent down by September unless the DOE gives us an extension.
Questions? Member Don Lee, follow-up?
Yeah. When we did the budget, there was a point where there was $5 million of funds, COVID-impact funds, that didn't have to be expended in this fiscal year, that the board chose to invest into mental health. And goodness knows that our students need more mental health. But my memory of those funds is they weren't expiring funds. So I'd really like to take some time here and explore the, you know, because money is typically fungible, to examine whether we could use, you know, switch funds here to make sure that we're utilizing all the funds that have to be expended in this fiscal year and make sure we cover what the board's goals were last year, but identify if any of the money that was, that was put into the budget for this fiscal year was, was still, was something that could be carried over into next year to be able to use to soften the impact.
And Member Don Lee, if I recall correctly, I thought that the mental health allocation was ESAR dollars. Chief Anderson, can you clarify that? Or SIRSSA?
So during the, during the budget approval in the last five or 10 minutes of amendments before it got passed, it was SIRSSA money, and it was $5 million toward mental health. I repeatedly reiterated that we would look at that as an upper limit spending authority because we didn't have a plan. I think you're going to find that we will have a plan ready to be briefed that shows how those funds will be spent towards mental health, ready for the 20 September board meeting, and you'll find that the number is significantly less than $5 million, primarily because all of the other agencies in town who are providing those services are all in competition for the same limited resources, and so that amount of money won't be required. So we'll come back later and ask for reallocation of that towards some other higher priority item. But first, of course, the board will need to get briefed on the mental health plan, which has been developing for the last six months, and it's now firming up into something that's briefable and executable. When you look at the numbers that we put somewhat vague, things like the bus crisis, and knowing that we were going to need an audit of all of our bus routes from special ed through general ed, those, that happened very, very quickly without time to go through a normal board process where we identify a problem. Two weeks later, we talk about it at non-action. Two weeks later, we talk about it at action, and then five weeks from the time we see a problem, we're able to actually do something about it. If we keep this a little bit vague right now, like we're bringing Shannon Bingham online and others as we identify problems this fall, the administration would be able to quickly go after these high priority, high-need, immediate assessments and try to find solutions, because frankly, we have about four months before we build next year's budget, and there's just a lot of moving pieces. So it is true that we left this intentionally, because there's things we don't know about that are going to come across our desk in two weeks that today we don't know about. What I will tell you is Andy knows how to say no better than anyone I've ever met. And if we don't need this money and we can't articulate and justify it, he will be the first person, followed by me, who says we can now reallocate this for something else. It really is meant to be more of an upper limit to allow us the flexibility to deal with all of those things associated with childhood learning audits potentially through school closures, reboundery, all those other things that we just don't know what's going to get to us. If, we'll know by December if we're going to be able to spend this, and if not, we're going to come back to the board and say, okay, this is what we had the authority for, and this is what we'd like to reallocate it toward. Knowing that SIRSSA money runs out on September 30 next year, at some point between now and June 30, we'll first do an ESAR review of both ESAR 2 and ESAR 3 of what we planned on spending this year. If it looks like we're going to have a fund balance rollover of SIRSSA that we're not going to be spending out at this year, we will, we will, you know, take some of the ESAR 3 costs, delay those, because you always spend the money that expires first. And this memo really gives us that flexibility without having to spend five weeks every time we need to make a decision, because when it comes down to September 30 next year, we need that number to be zero and not leave $100,000 hanging, because we didn't have that five-week period to get enough board meetings to get all of those little minor nuances corrected. And that's, that's really the philosophy toward this.
Member Higgins, I see your mic's on. Did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I just, as I read it, I remember when I first got on the school board in 2008, 2009, you had a superintendent. Every time the year started, you saw how many students are there, whatever funds they could do to keep the classroom sizes from going up, and they pulled the money quickly because it's focused on kids and classroom sizes make a difference. I'm wondering what the, first of all, what the enrollment increase is. How are we looking right now?
I can answer that through the President to Member Higgins. We're looking at roughly about 1,000 more kids year over year right now than we were last year. When we first started recovering from the pandemic, what we saw was at high school level, it was much, much closer to projection than elementary, and much, many more parents kept elementary kids at home. What we're seeing this year is that the elementary numbers are increasing, and we, we don't know, because we've never recovered from a pandemic, if it will stay at 1,000. Did some people register earlier than they would because they felt confident that schools really would open this year on time? But right now, the numbers are looking pretty strong, and frankly, the elementary resurgence, it's, it's not huge. It's not in the 5,000 kids, but, but we are looking at large enough numbers that we legitimately need to start looking for and trying to hire 10 to 15 teachers in elementary now, five in secondary, with an additional five-plus by the end of the semester, depending on how course loads shake out. And, and those decisions really, I mean, we're, we need to start now. Frankly, we'll start tomorrow trying to hire those teacher vacancies as soon as it's approved. And again, as we find out that there are going to be some positions that we can't hire, and we know that we're not going to be able to spend the money, we will come back to the board. to the board at a future point and say, we asked for 4 point X million dollars. We think that by the end of the year, we will have only spent 3 million, whatever the number is going to be, and we'll ask for a redirect within the flexibility that the memo gives us.
Follow-up?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. One, I hope that when we look at additional staffing, I remember the studies coming out with the National School Board Association and what some districts were doing and putting a lot of emphasis on classroom size at second grade and how it impacted educational reading scores and how it stayed with it. In fact, they gave reports that said it received about 90% of the efficiency of what you get out of lowering classroom sizes in the whole group. So that was such, whatever it is, I hope we follow best practices or studies to show what a best impact can be. In regards to the investments, and I appreciate Member Donnelly challenging these because I like questioning that, I like looking at better ways, but I do like the idea of the high-impact one-time, emphasis one-time investments, I like. And when it comes to audits and systems and analysis, that's close to my heart. So that's not a problem at all within that. In fact, if most of that went into that, that would be okay with me, because I really think we've got to question what we're doing, look at improvements and go for it. And putting money in there is the best investment I think we can do. So focus first on kids with the classrooms. We're putting, got to worry about the increased classroom sizes and how it impacts the success of kids when you've got an influx of 1,000 kids. And like I said, one time, you're in the right ballpark with me there. But the audit analysis, I really hope we get into a discussion on that real soon because that's going to be, I think, the future of what we have to do. We can't stick with status quo. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Let's go to my right, Member Lessons.
I wanted to thank Member Donnelly for pulling this from the consent agenda so we could have a discussion about it. I had some of the very same questions. I did email them to staff ahead of time, and that tempered my reticence because the core of the response was this need to be nimble. But I'm supportive, so for that reason, I'm supportive of really the vaguest memo that I can think of in a long time. And I mean, but desperate times, in a sense, call for desperate and innovative measures. And so I think we're, board members are correct to call that out. And I think administrators are, there's value in saying, we're just going to do what it takes. We're not quite sure if it's this amount exactly right now or this amount exactly. But I think that we can collaborate here and move forward, as Member Higgins always reminds us, with the best interests of kids at heart. I wanted to say that I'm supportive of things that might seem preposterous here. We can support our student mental health by investing in the playgrounds that we know are less equipped than they could be, right? Because we know that that play really activates our student learning. It improves our student mental health. It addresses in some way childhood ACE scores, right? Those traumatic adverse childhood experiences. We received as a board a really compelling email recently from the Best Beginnings Organization, which has an incredibly high return on investment for $30 a year per child from birth to age five. They send out books that said that connects children and their families, and they equip kids before they get to kindergarten to be ready for kindergarten. And I encourage every one of those board members to look at how participation in the Best Beginnings Imagination Library has associations with higher literacy skills, higher reading and math achievement in grade three, have higher attendance rates in K through three. These are all of the things that we need to piggyback on for $30 a year per child. If ASD thought creatively and nimbly, and I'm not saying we should grant it, we don't have the money to be Mary Poppins and grant, we don't have money to everybody, but this is bang for our buck. And so as we think about the future, as we think about our destination, our strategy 2026, our goals and guardrails of getting kids kindergarten and proficient at third grade reading, it starts with thinking outside the box with partnering with parents and putting money to its best and highest use. And so that's a bigger rant, but I just say I'm excited by the vagueness of this proposal. I'm going to support it and do right by it.
Okay, coming back around, Member Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a question for administration, just to put a finer point on, is it the intention to brief the board before the end of the year as to what was used, how much was used and for what, and what can be reallocated?
Yes, that's the intent. And that's something that, you know, the federal government is curious about too. How is ESER money being spent? So we'll be sure to make sure, we'll be sure to ensure that the board is briefed on that.
Okay, any other comments before we vote? The motion before you. Member Donnelly.
I'd just say that a lot of the things that have been represented, the administration would like to use this for, I'd support. It's just that it's so vague, it's really hard for me to vote for over $4 million without more detail.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Member Donnelly. We are now at to vote. Our discussion is done. Please vote. To approve reallocation of unspent SIRSIA funds for '22, '23 in the amount of $4,781,781,674. And that, that motion passes, six yays, one nay. Thank you. And now that brings us to non-action, non-action items. Let's see, who's pulling what for non-action? Member Jacobs?
Madam President, may I pull ASD memorandum 024, please?
024, thank you. Anything else? They'll be back next week or two weeks. Okay?
Could we pull 18, memorandum 18?
Sure. Number three, item G3, which is memorandum 018.
And, oh, number 20, memorandum 20.
Item G5. All right, let's start with item eight. Member Jacobs, you pulled it. Yes, item, item G8 is memorandum 24.
Thank you, Madam President. So I had a couple of questions that I think are tangentially related to this and will help me think through how we want to move forward in allocating these dollars. I had received an email today that, I'm sorry, Mr. Holloman, Board Member Holloman, had sent with a concern at service. I've also had a concern sent to me by a parent with the condition of grass out of service and a couple other facility concerns too. And so it would be helpful to get more information from the administration, if possible, as to how, what the process looks like for receiving, triaging, and completing minor maintenance issues that don't require a school bond necessarily, but do require a maintenance staff to take action. And then more information as to if there's a current backlog, what that process looks like right now in terms of time to complete a request, more info there would be helpful.
Would a member of my team be able to provide some additional insight, I believe, Mr. Anderson or Mr. Holland?
If I could provide an overview of major maintenance by statute, it's things that cost more than $50,000. So there are currently a number of roofs that we're looking at. We don't know the cost to high school, to middle school, to elementary. There will be emerging projects coming very quickly. We know that depending on which schools close and how we repurpose the schools, that we also know we're going to need additional funding potentially to do some renovation in order to execute that plan. And that was the reason why we did not put major maintenance on purpose in the board memo for discussion yet until after we have allowed that to flush out a little bit, knowing that there wasn't really an immediate need to allocate that, those funds, without the proper information available to the school board. So we think very shortly we'll be able to come back, potentially even offer portions of it for those significant leaks that we know we're going to have to fix, but we don't know the price yet. And as we find out more about potential school closures and repurposing, and on top of that, then we'll have the rest of the list that would bring it down to board discussion for priorities. But that was the reason we left it out of the memo, and it was because we know we have some very large dollar unknowns that are kind of locked in jello right now, but not anything we could brief in priority.
Madam President, can I follow up?
Sure.
I might have two follow-ups. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for the information. To clarify, I think we're just referencing the 9.5 million. Okay, and that's helpful. The school bond debt reimbursement funds or the other tranches of the money that was awarded to us, looking at if there are projects that are outstanding for less than $50,000, I was trying to get a handle on. Specifically, I think the email that Member Holloman had sent earlier today indicated that a particular request was outstanding for quite some time and had been revisited multiple times. So that was kind of the underlying, the background information for why I was curious if there's a backlog of some minor maintenance projects, some more routine matters that wouldn't require that major maintenance label. Thank you.
So I think to just try to clarify again, let me try to clarify again. I think what Member Jacobs is trying to discern is from, at what point from the completion of a repair or a maintenance order, you know, how long does it take for, and that will be, that will vary. But if we can...
Madam President, to put a finer point on, do we have a backlog of minor maintenance projects that need to be completed?
Yeah. And I would add, do we have people to do the work?
Thank you. To the President, Member Jacobs, your short answer is yes and no. Let me elaborate. So we use a work order system, a CMMS, computerized maintenance management system. It's called SchoolDude. We're in the process of upgrading it, by the way. We are currently, I pulled some data, just kind of some high-level data, not to get too far into the weeds. And I took out the deferred and on-hold items, things that don't have to be done anytime soon, things we categorize as wants versus needs, okay? So I took those out, and we currently have 2,621 work orders in our system that are active. That's a snapshot in time as of today. We have 15 total trades in our maintenance department. Of that 2,621 work orders, as of today, 1,296 are in our under-30-days category. And then we have, at the extreme other end, in the over-120-days category, we have 309 of those extant. To drill down to a couple of examples to address needs, staffing, funding, because staffing, funding, and needs generally go hand in hand. Our most critical need for people is in our heat vent and air conditioning unit. We're down to five people. In that unit, some of those positions have been open for a year. Because we have a delta of pay of approximately $10 an hour under the market, unfortunately, it's widening as we speak. We fear we have one more resignation coming in the next three to four weeks. People are finding jobs for $10 to $12 an hour or more. That particular unit, HVAC, has 322 current work orders, 88 of those are in the 120-day and over column. Now, we manage this, and I'd like to share some information quickly about that by priority, and this is just a screenshot, prioritizing our response. An emergency response, we deal with within 24 hours. We currently have only one extant emergency response. A safety response is 48 hours or less. A high response is within seven days. As an example, I pulled a sample of our high priority, high response priority requests, district-wide through all 15 crafts. We have 113 of those. Under 30 days, there are nine of those outstanding in roofing alone. This is an example I pulled because of the roofing challenges we're having right now. Mother Nature is a bit relentless the last seven or eight weeks, and Mother Nature has found a way to show us every single weakness in every roof. Of course, we have a lot of those. Those can be very difficult to find. I know there's a lot of attention on that because roofing damage can damage a lot of the rest of the infrastructure, to include the picture that you sent along that I reviewed today. So an example of this is some repairs that we're completing as we speak at Diamond Elementary, I'm sorry, Diamond High School on the roof. Took about a year to chase this leak. These flat roof systems can be very, very, very difficult to find leaks, depending on the season and when it rains again and freezes, et cetera. We use thermal imaging. You can chase a leak under a membrane sometimes not just 30 or 40 feet, but 100 feet. There's so many different causes. We did find the cause for that leak, and we're spending $285,000 in major maintenance money right now. Please note, members of the board, that's our entire roofing, major maintenance budget for the year, to put this in perspective. So these are some snapshots, Member Jacobs and board, of the way we use data in our computerized management system of work orders, and that we do track agings, and we track it by priority, and we track it by craft. I hope that has answered your question.
Madam President, one more follow-up.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Holland. I appreciate the detailed response. I guess it would just be a point, maybe not a question. Ahead of our Finance Committee meeting on the 14th, it would be helpful to have a proposal from administration as to how one-time funds could be used to cut down on that 2,600-item backlog, if that's something that the administration seems would deem appropriate, what an amendment to, memorandum to appropriate this money might look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. Member Holloman?
Yes, as a follow-up, it sounds like a neat system. I'm wondering if there is a possibility, Mr. Holland, through the chair, for staff to be able to access that information in a view priority. I say this to someone that was in a classroom, I was a building tech, so I was aware of a lot of things in our building. And a lot of times, just trying to find out if something is still in the hopper, if somebody thinks it's fixed, can just be consuming and basically use up a lot of effort. But if somebody could log in and see, oh, okay, you know, it's in the queue, and it may be a few months, the questions go away.
Thank you, Member Holloman.
Yes, to the President, Member Holloman, yeah, we do pay by the number of licenses to look at that. Currently, principals can look and see that data. Of note, we've been reviewing with the help of our IT teams, a new software platform that's quite a bit more robust, more timely and more accurate than the current model. So we're always ever-evolving, trying to become the best version of that that's being vetted as we speak. That particular work order system, just so you know, allows us to put multiple crafts on a single work order. And I thought I would use this as a quick example, so you understand why we would be looking at something better than what we have. What we have right now is based on 1990s code, software code, not building code. And as such, we can only look at one craft per work order at a time. So you can kind of do the math here and see that that can be very cumbersome. So the new system we're going to look at, we've already purchased with existing budget money that we have, we've already purchased new iPads for all of our crafts. They'll be able to look at all of these and do, assign multiple crafts to a single work order in the field and close work orders in the field, something we can't do now. So yeah, it's very robust. Principals can log in and see where their work order in queue now, and that has been the case for the last five years.
Any other questions? I have a question, not necessarily on that, but I...
I have a question, not necessarily on that, but what are we doing with Ursa Major? I mean, what is that repair and where's, how are we going to repair that building? Or are we, what is the plan? Do we know?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So we are waiting on a report which which is due in October, roughly mid-October. That report, as part of this whole process, is going to give us a 15% design perspective on Ursa Major. What that report will say is, here's the repairs that are necessary on a broad view, the view from 30,000 feet, and here's about what that will cost. The task, when we receive that data, will be to decide whether we repair or replace the school, as we would in any consideration like that. Let's say the repair bill is $20 million. You know, at that point, for instance, you'd be starting to talk about replacing a school. We don't know the number yet. I just pulled that number out of the air. But it's going to be substantial because it involves, we do know that that involves the replacement of all of the sheer walls in the main, the main rib, the central corridor of that building, which was constructed in 1952. We will certainly advise the board when we have that report.
Thank you very much. Member Donley?
Madam President, memorandum 24 is really open. I mean, there's options presented here that aren't really identified. I mean, as well, how it's going to proceed. I think what I would really like to see on a process with this much money involved is to have the next meeting have amendments be proposed. I mean, to be written amendments proposed to this so the public would get notice of what what was going to come up and be discussed. And then to have those out there until the following meeting, so the public could say, okay, well, some people are proposing to add money, you know, expend money for this or expend money for that. As it is now, there wouldn't be any notice of that until we actually came back to the next meeting. And I think that'd just be really, really a better public process in dealing with this.
Okay. Hold on a minute, let me go to Higgins and then I'm going to come back to you, Kelly. Member Higgins?
Okay. Well, I hope we're not recording this because I agree somewhat with what Member Donley said. So I just, we've cut the recording off, it's just so that it'd make me happy. When the past, when we've had budget changes, we've had more detail. And what we did with that information was, at least when I was on the school board the first time, when we're allocating funds, we actually reduced spending and administration nine years in a row. And it's going in the opposite direction in the past from what you've seen. And I think one of those factors has been that we've gotten more details and we ask more questions and it resulted in a better budget, better budget for the administration, better budget from the school district, but most importantly, better for kids. And so I do think we need to move away from, we've got $5 million, let us put it where you want and not get into some of the weeds that really are relevant from a board perspective in the direction that the administration is headed and what we can accomplish. I think it put the administration on, you know, an issue of questioning and challenging it more than what it was. But when it then, the first the first board meeting, I remember here, they had funds left open and they put in so many millions of dollars to continue status quo, about what the budget proposal was. And that was very upsetting to me because it, one, it was just status quo and we just, so we can continue what we've got, when we've got to be looking at opportunities for improvement. We've got to be looking and challenging what we've been doing because we don't get the results that we want. So I really do agree with what I, in the direction that that's being challenged by Representative Donley, and that is, we're given just a trust us on the budget, trust us on this, do this. And I think more information out there from a public perspective of feeling comfortable that the money's being properly spent and that we've provided some oversight in regards to what's going on and we're looking at opportunities to improve the outcomes through the budget process as well, is a very fair challenge. I think it's important. I'm not in favor of trying to, I don't expect to be able to put a budget in whiplash by turning and changing it dramatically or within a board meeting, but I do think that's the direction we need to be in. Other than, you know, in the past, here's the budget, take a look. We need to have discussions about what's in the budget, where the money's going, what changes are going up and down in some comparisons. And I really want to be that engaged. I know it's time consuming on the part of the of the school board, but I think it will be very educational to look at what additional monies are being spent in ways that are more beneficial for kids. That's what we're all about and looking for opportunities to do that. Because I know we've asked the superintendent to walk into a firestorm and I know he's got to put the fire out and I think the board needs to be engaged of saying, we're behind this, we're engaged in it. It's not just the superintendent, it's the board too. And if we just say, you tell us what you want, then it's the superintendent only and we're responsible. We are accountable for the fact that we're going to make some tough choices, we're going to make some budget changes. Let's be engaged with it and let's be owners for that decision because the superintendent reports to the board and we need to be there for the superintendent, most importantly for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. I do know that the next finance committee meeting, and I'm going to let Member Lessin speak to that and maybe Jim, but that is an opportunity for us to begin to come up with the some, it's an hour and a half this time, I think, right? Okay, I'll let you go, Cal, and then maybe Jim.
Go bigger, go home.
Go bigger, go home.
So yeah, next finance committee meeting, be there. I appreciate Member Donley's interest in having a discussion about memo 24 and we're discussing it right now. I wanted to share that Member Jacobs and I have begun some discussions on on what I think is a really wonderful setup. I appreciate that the administration created option one, option two, and option three. And that is an invitation for discussion, collaboration, public input in how we're going to capitalize on a unique opportunity to to build safe, healthy, resilient schools that will serve our community's needs, our kids' needs now with leaky roofs and and potentially decades into the future. So I think we all understand the gravity of our situation, but I did want to share with respect to the upcoming finance meeting that I hope to present an option three, a substitute for memorandum 24. And I think that's an excellent time for amendments, discussion, conversation that we could then bring to the next board meeting.
Jim, I did ask you to comment. I'm sorry, Dr. Bryan, is that okay?
Yes, ma'am. So it doesn't show real easy when you just look at the board memo, but if you look at the two attachments, you'll see attachment A is eight-page in-depth on the projects that are shovel-ready for FY '23. The reason that we broke it out into FY '23 and '24, the second attachment, seven pages long. So I get that the actual memo is only a page and a half, but it's about 17 pages total. And I think that we did try to break out and describe what each of the projects were. Having said that, we also knew that there was interest in things that were not in the approved, the last approved CIP. So if you look at the list for '23 and '24, with the exception of the security cameras, all of those have been and are on the board's currently approved CIP list and it goes out to about $100 million. But we've all heard public testimony about other options that may preempt the districts' build in the last CIP. So we did leave it open, knowing that it likely would be amended, but I I think our our attempt to try to put the detail was in the attachments and not the main memo, only because we weren't sure just how many amendments. And now I, now there's a complete substitute that looks remarkably different that that will probably be popping up in the next week or so. So, you know, I, I think on the FY '23 shovel-ready projects, this is probably a good time to describe why we brought this memo forward. Before we brought the memo forward, I think I talked to the board about how decisions on all of this didn't need to be made immediately. Those decisions that needed to be made was on the FY '23 shovel-ready projects. If we get a decision on what we're going to do next summer, FY '23, and that's as far as the board gets, then we can have RFPs on the street in October and we can, we can start doing contracts this winter and have it ready to be a shovel-ready. If we delay the FY '23 for another month to six weeks, we lose that that valuable season where all the contractors are trying to lay on their summer work. And that's, that was the timing of it. The intent was not, at least on my part and Rob's part, was to get a formal commitment on all of it, but we did know those shovel-ready projects, once the contractors have locked them in, we're going to see what we saw with Aquarian last year, which was the workforce wasn't there because contractors had locked in their their projects, the costs escalated significantly. And we wanted to avoid that for the use of these funds for next summer projects. So I just would recommend that if the board wants significant changes, we have no four votes and we're good. We have no emotion to it, but on those FY '23, the timing to get shovel-ready projects into RFP in the beginning of October to reach that sweet spot for getting those contracts for the summer, that's of more importance to us than than whether all 90 million has been decided.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Okay. Yes, Member Donley?
Madam President, with the finance committee anticipating bringing forward a substitute proposal, I'd move to to table the final consideration of memorandum 23 to the first meeting in October, with the understanding that at our September 20th meeting, the finance committee would present their proposal to the board and then it would be public for the public to know what, you know, what the, what their recommendation is and give them a chance to digest that before our next meeting and the final decision is made.
So is there a second? Oh, you have a question?
That builds on that.
I still have to have a second before we discuss. So you want a point of information?
Okay. Yes, I guess the point of information. Would a vote on memorandum 024, the first meeting of October, and I don't know that date off the top of my head?
Second?
October 2nd. Is that timely enough?
Yep.
For you to get a vote, a count of four, one way or the other?
Yes, ma'am.
You would actually be October 4th. Is that timely? Okay. Now, a point of information, so the motion, we're still waiting for a second on the motion?
Second.
Moved in second that we, is it continue or table? Continue.
I guess it would continue on the non-action calendar for one meeting and then be on the action calendar for the October 4th meeting.
Okay. All right. All right. Do you have it all? Yeah, we could, I think we can do a straw poll vote and put it in a minute so we don't have to, because it's it's still non-action right now. Is there any opposition to the Mr. Donley's motion to continue this until the April 4th? I mean, not April, sorry, October. Duh. October 4th. All right. Seeing none, we can put it in the minutes that we will, that that's what we'll do. We don't need to do a formal vote. Okay, thank you. Let's move on now to memorandum number 18, operating budget transfers. Member Donley, you pulled it?
Thank you, Madam President. I just, let me get my, to the page here. Thank members of the board. I just noted that in some of the the fund transfers, they were, there seemed to be a running theme of our vacancies for special service teachers. And I was just wondering if there was any, do we have a sense where we're at right now with the magnitude of that, those vacancies is, how many?
I don't have the vacancy number off the top of my hand for special education. We do have about 120 teacher vacancies district-wide and a huge number, a huge percentage would be special education. So that's why we're excited to announce that we're making a slight adjustment to certain special education teachers to receive a certain percentage grade or compensation to help us recruit and retain. And there's always more that we can do to bring in more special education teachers. It's very important.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually think it's a great idea. I'm really excited that that's being done. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on 18? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to memorandum number 20. Member Donley, you pulled them all? No, you only pulled one. But it's yours. Approval of the org chart.
I understand if nobody else is interested, but when when I work with organizational charts, it's really useful for me to see pay ranges. It really helps me further identify the structure and the and the individuals that have, you know, more supervisory and more senior responsibilities. So I understand, I think it's an administrative decision whether or not to do that, but I'm just saying that to me, it would make it a more helpful, a more useful organizational chart if there were pay ranges listed. Thank you. But I understand it's an executive decision and it's within the jurisdiction of the administration.
Thank you, Member Donley. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, let's move on. Item H. Thank you, guys. Do we have any, I do see our Mr. Gustafson in the audience. Did you want to speak before we leave from the non-action items, sir? We'll give you three minutes, actually, or less.
Members of the board, through the chair, I'm just here, I was here this evening to just ask support in renaming our stadium in the back of West High School, the West High, the West High Alumni Stadium. Our alumni is a huge program at our school, it's been there through the 90s, since the 90s, and they've put almost at least $2 million back into our school and we think that recognizing all of our alumni with that designation would be appropriate. So I was just here this evening to, knowing that was on the non-action items, just to come and really ask for support for that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Now that brings us to superintendent's update, item I. Take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Board and Anchorage community. I'm excited to share my first superintendent update since the first day of school. And what a day it was. I greatly enjoyed the opportunity to spend the entire day visiting campuses across the district and to see classrooms in action, talk to students, and to get to know members of Team ASD. So I'm sure I'm not the only one who is both excited for students to return to school, but also a little bit anxious about how it would go. It feels like ages ago that I first shared with the board that we had to make the difficult decision to halt use of Ursa Major due to seismic concerns. And I spent many nights thinking about how that must feel for Ursa Major teachers, wondering how students would adjust to their new school. And I thought about what it would be like for Ursa Major parents who whose heads were spinning as they're facing a transition from a walking school situation to depending on bus transportation for the first time. And that weighed very heavily on my heart. So I spent the first morning of my first day of school touring all of our JABR campuses and I was really surprised. I have no doubt that this change was incredibly challenging and emotional for all involved, but I was blown away by the positivity. I saw classrooms that were full and with lapping students. I saw teachers that were fully settled into their classrooms and I saw strong routines and procedures in place for parent pickup and drop-off and engagement on the first day of school. So across the board, our principals embraced Ursa Major students as their own, created systems to fully integrate them into school and to acquaint them with their classmates, both old and new, as well as their teachers. as well as their teachers. We have incredible leaders, teachers, and students at J-Bear, and I enjoyed spending the day with them. I also wanted to see the impact of our busing crisis firsthand, observing traffic flow and campus dismissal routines and procedures at schools that are impacted by consolidated routes or paused service. And my team and I have been meeting daily to share our firsthand reflections and observations so that we can continuously improve the situation. As you know, routes are starting to become fully restored. Collaborative conversations have been had with traffic engineers and the muni, and over 2,000 community members heard our call to action and offered to volunteer as bus attendants, as crossing guards, and in other high-impact roles to help our schools. I was also curious about enrollment and attendance, and I'm sure there are members of the board who are curious about that, too. And that was another positive surprise. Both attendance and enrollment outpaced historical trends for the first week of school. Despite the busing challenges, our community came together and granted us their patience and trust and got their students to school. Attendance continues to be over 90%, and enrollment has slightly exceeded projections. And many more students enrolled in school earlier. Our families and students are ready and excited to be back, and it was humbling to welcome them. So a few updates that I want to share, first on transportation. So I do want to take this time to recognize the 673rd Logistics Readiness Squadron and the four active-duty airmen who will take over J-Bear busing routes for the next 90 days. They will start on Monday with the start of our transition to Cohort 2. We value this partnership, and this also frees up an additional four ASD drivers who will restore service to students across the district, not at J-Bear. So we're very thankful for that. Two, we have over 50 individuals in bus driver training or with September start dates or in the interview process. So that means we're on track to be staffed about 205 out of our 228 routes by early October. So what that means, in other words, is that we're in arms' reach of restoring service sometime in October and sooner if we get more licensed drivers in our applicant pool. So with the end of tourism season upon us, I highly encourage our local bus drivers to consider joining Team ASD. Our students and community need you in this moment as the district prepares its recommendation to the board on how to fix this issue long-term. There are a number of compelling ideas for us to consider as a board to address the root cause of the bus driver shortage going into the next school year, and there's more to come on that in the future. Our external audit of bus routes and transportation operations will aid the administration on this front and help us transform our transportation division to be among the most efficient of our large district peers and hopefully will never be in this situation again. Lastly, we're gearing up for the transition to Cohort 2 a bus service, and we'll be communicating information to families and the community regularly so that we can prepare. You probably already saw some of our coverage in the ADN with the colorful ads that are also helping us promote. I think that's a really positive thing, but we also want to make sure that we continue to make sure that families are aware, the city is aware, of how this could impact traffic. I do want to give a couple of updates on budget. One, earlier this evening, the board was presented with additional information on potential strategies to address the shortfall. The purpose of today's presentation was not to provide recommendations but to present information that will inform our difficult conversations this fall. I made a commitment to the board that we would not leave any stone unturned, so we need to provide extensive cost information so that we do our best to ensure our cuts do not impact learning. Lastly, with budget, I know I shared some exciting news this month about enrollment increases at some schools and being slightly above enrollment projections. But I want the community to understand that in the big picture, we're still down thousands of students from where we were at 10 years ago. So in other words, yes, some schools will receive additional teachers because enrollment is up at their school, but at the system level, that's not happening consistently. Lastly, I want to get a staffing update. I know the attention has been on bus drivers, but I also want the community to know that we actively need substitute teachers, paraprofessionals, and food service staff in the district. This is at the forefront of the district leadership's agendas as we determine short-term and long-term solutions to this issue. Compensation is one variable in the puzzle, but we must also have other conversations about systemic issues that may be impacting our shortages. On a related note, we're excited to welcome a new Senior Director of Nutrition Services who has great experiences, including dietitian expertise. So we're pleased to have fantastic staff thinking through this complicated puzzle so that we can ensure access to nutritious meals. So to close, in summary, the charge to the community is to think of ways that you want to help students succeed, whether you offer a carpool to your neighbor's children or volunteer in her classrooms as a crossing guard or perhaps even considering a career in ASD. Now is the time to do it. So I encourage you to check out our website at asdk12.org/workforasd and asdk12.org/volunteer to get more information on how you can offer your time and expertise to our students. So I'll close there. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bryant. I did fill out my volunteer form, and I got a response already. Oh, I remember lessons.
So did I. And actually, because it was my kid's first field trip and the kind people dealing with all the volunteers expedited the field trip volunteer. So there was a lot of juggling, but well done. This was a question I received at a community council. Are we tapping into whatever ASD's pool of retired teachers might be to help as substitutes, to help... I mean, are we reaching out to them in any organized concerted fashion? Because that was that community member's suggestion, and I thought it was a relevant one to at least raise.
I think that's a great suggestion, and I want to confirm all the different things going on on that front in writing in a board connect, just seeing all the different ways that we're engaging retirees.
Thank you. A lot of them are subbing for us already. And former board members, for that matter. Dora, I mean, Member Wilson.
You can work. One question I received, and I did not know the answer, honestly. Are we recruiting for bus drivers to work part-time or only full-time?
Both part-time and full-time.
Thank you.
Okay. Andy, do you have anything on this end? Okay, Member Higgins, I see your mic's on. Was that just from the last time?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that again?
Your mic is on. Did you have a question or comment on the... Okay. Member Jacobs, comment? Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. It's strangely not too early to think about legislative action the next session, and I haven't had the time to figure out why Alaska can't have the National Guard help out with school busing in emergencies. I know many other states have the National Guard help out. If there's any way that between now and when we sit down to make our legislative priorities, we could better understand that the board could consider making that a legislative priority to change the law so the National Guard could help us out, I think that'd be really worth our consideration as a priority.
Thank you, Member Donley. And while I'm... What came to mind is regarding legislative priorities is Heather Brakes will be at the next communications meeting to specifically address the question regarding those bills that didn't get traction. So this could be possibly part of that. Thank you. Okay, any other... Yes.
I guess the answer is yes, now.
Yes, yes, now.
A couple of comments. One, I appreciate the analytical approach that you're giving this information, and it's new information. So it's really value-added to me to listen to them with this information. I really do appreciate that. The only thing I would ask or ask for consideration is that when we have presentations and we're talking about issues involving staff, is at least an acknowledgement of what the staff is saying or where the issues are and why we're taking the direction we are. Because one of the complaints that I hear from staff is that they don't hear us. We're not listening. We're not doing that. I know that's a different day today. I appreciate that. But I think somewhere in here, the fact that they're not following this material, they're not doing this, they're not doing that. The question is why, or what is the staff saying, or what the issue is? I think that's relevant to the board, for us, to the confirmation that it's being heard by the administration. The administration is considering it, but we're going forward in the justification for it. So I can respond to staff, and I also feel more comfortable in the decision. I think that would be real value added. But I appreciate the reports that you've brought. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Okay. Not seeing any more comments. We're moving on, and thank you, Dr. Bryant. Moving on to item J, comments. School, Board, and Administration comments. Before I get to those, I'll just say that your committee reports are attached. If you have committee reports, please give them to make sure Amanda gets those. And the Community Outreach Report will be attached. Mostly, that's the school board, not school board, the community council little update that I do. But you are certainly welcome to do your own. You don't have to use mine. But if you do your own, you might want to also attach it to the agenda. Okay, so now, let's start to my right. Board member comments. And you could feel free to pass if you'd like.
Oh, no. I've been saving up all the... This is it.
All right, so keep us off end.
Yeah, I did want to say that the attendance numbers that Dr. Bryant mentioned are heartening. They've been by some of the schools, and truly, the traffic is atrocious. I mean, people are having to endure in order to get their kids to the front door and get back out again. In some cases, I've only been near a school and been very aware that, like, holy heck, why are all these cars here? And I realize there's an elementary school four or five blocks away, and that is what's happening. So the people are getting through that is really encouraging. I also appreciate very much the call to serve as part of the solution. Yeah, I do think that organically, a lot of times, we want to make it about money, say, hey, you can come make money. But the reality is, there are a lot of people in this community that if they feel needed and they feel like they're part of something that matters to them, they'll step up to do it. And if they get paid, that's great, but that's not really why they're there. And I think it's good that we're tapping that resource and that it is coming through. The last thing, I did... I got directed to a social media post by a friend of mine that got shared literally hundreds of times and then became the article for a blog. When I first saw it, I elevated it to Dr. Brandt, and he did a bit of research and came back with the actual facts behind it. And that was very helpful. I have been in communications with at least two dozen people about it. You know, we have a blog that published something as if it was a factual article based off a social media post from someone who did not have firsthand experience. It was wildly inaccurate. You know, just as things often do, it touched on some things that actually happened and then painted a picture of something that did not. And it was helpful to have the rapid response. It is a case that a lot of people are painting what's going on in our schools in a really negative light. And it has always happened a little bit. And I think as an educator, you kind of skate by it and just realize it's going to happen. But it's happening in such a degree, and the volume of it is so high. And some of the things are so pointed that I feel like we all need to be pushing back on that. I spent a lot of years in the classroom. And I'm going to say, over 90% of the time, what I saw was teachers on task, on topic for the material that they had, whatever class it was. I had my own class, but I also worked in technology for a number of years, so I was in and out of a lot of classes. I helped a lot of teachers with material and different things. We're not spending a huge amount of time trying to sexualize children or confuse them about their gender. And that really is a very prolific accusation being leveled at our school district right now, our school district and districts across the country. And I hope everyone will push back on it. The people I know work very hard at communicating their material in the best way possible. It's about the subject matter. It is... As a number of folks have said, you know, if we really could indoctrinate children that well, they would know their history and be able to do algebra. They wouldn't be coming back with all these other things that people are suggesting we're spending a lot of time on. So I do want to say thank you to the staff for what I see as very hard, focused work from the very top of the administration right down through the classroom and into the folks that are making the buildings work by keeping them clean or serving food or supporting staff. And I think we need to just make sure we emphasize that to folks and push back on some of the stories that are being generated.
Thank you, Member Holloman. All of those were on my mind, heart, and mind as well. Thank you. Member Lessons?
Didn't really come with formal prepared remarks, but thank you for sharing that this evening. Thank you sincerely to members of the administration for answering the many questions that board members and I maybe especially asked. So, thank you. And I look forward to... I set up... I was so excited. This is more for the rest of you. I figured out that I could create a Google form and send time slots to the schools in my... I've got Bartlett area schools, and so I sent that out today. So I've got like 30 or 40 time slots that I created and hoping that the principals can say yes on this day. It will work for me at this hour. So anyways, just a little idea if you are setting up your own visits this fall.
Dang, I did it the old-fashioned way, but maybe next semester. Member Wilson?
I also appreciate Member Holloman's comments. Thank you for those. And like Member Lessons, I wanted to keep it fairly short. But I also want to reiterate the thank you to all of our district employees and families for all of your continued commitment to our students. Also wanted to mention that we have a Communications Committee meeting coming up on September 22 at noon. So please feel free to join us.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Shaw, what do you have for us tonight? As a closing comment?
I don't think I have anything.
Okay, you don't... When your next meeting is?
September 13th, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Here 15, here business attire.
Okay, thank you. Oh, business attire. Thank you for that. Okay. Member Donley?
I just want to thank all the parents and students out there for their patience and understanding with the school bus issues. Greatly appreciated. And just be as nice as you can to each other whenever you're in those long lines because everybody's in the same boat. And I know the administration's doing everything we can to alleviate the situation. So I just want to say thank you for your patience.
Yes, Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of quick notes. I will echo it. It's been inspiring to see our community staff or educators come together and make the start of the school year a success despite some of the transportation challenges. So thank you, and thank you for the grace and the kindness that's been displayed and all the first-day-of-school photos. You know, having teenagers didn't really always hit home, but seeing some of the little ones, it was pretty inspiring, pretty cool. I wanted to share, we've had some pretty tough conversations today. And so I wanted to share, you know, a note of hope, I guess. I was sitting at a community council meeting last month, and there was a study brought up that Iser released, I think, in March that indicated that Alaska's K-12 education spending, based on 2019 data, it's assumed that disparities only increase, but it fell below the national average for the second time in a row, and that the gap is increasing. But it wasn't brought up by me as a board member. A member of the public brought it up. And I've heard over and over again that this board has been among the most active in recent memory in spreading factual information, to Member Holloman's point about some of the struggles our district faces and districts across Alaska face. Some of that is taking hold, and folks are having uneducated conversations on some of the challenges this district is facing. And so I think we've done what we could to lay some of the groundwork. We're just scratching the surface with some of the conversations we're having now. But I think as we move into legislative priorities, the challenge will be not just harnessing the energy of the seven of us here at the table, but engaging that community who knows what Iser is, who knows that there's funding that's below the national average, and activating those individuals to inform their elected officials on what's important and why those individuals to inform their elected officials on what's important and why is going to be supremely important. So I've already got my thinking cap on that area, I hope you folks do too. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. Member Higgins.
Thank you. I want to thank the rest of the board for saving me three hours and 20 minutes for my comments, so that I can make sure I cover them all. I believe you got to have a sense of humor with this kind of stuff, but you got to be dead serious about the issues too. Let me start with finance. Everybody knows we're under crisis point, we're going to be getting in that direction. And I'll just reach out to the public. If you've got an interest in where the schools are going, where you're getting funding, ask every candidate to explain where they stand on the issues, so that you know when you're voting, when you're engaging, it becomes an issue. If it's on the website, that's probably an indication that it should be, and that's probably a good time to ask questions. I remember several years ago, probably nine years ago, when the school was looking at cutting middle school and dischanging high school classes and a number of other things, the public got enraged, started making calls to legislators, and legislators were going crazy, what the heck is going on, and did the school board cause it? I told them, "School board did cause it, we teach civics," and so be it, but it changed things and we got funding that year. So if you want to get, if you want to make a difference in schools, one way to do that is be engaged and ask the questions. Be a civic-minded person, vote, and get out there and ask questions of the candidates. They work for us, we work for you, and that's a fair statement. I appreciate all the comments from Inlet View. I will say, I keep hearing the emotions associated with it, with parents, with staff, and with kids. It means a lot. Ultimately, that decision has to be based not on wanting to do something politically, which I think is popular. It's not going to do with where we can cut money, because we have options out there. It has to do what's going to be best for the kids. It's a very full school, it's very popular, the results are good. I noticed you got a new superintendent, I know Arthur Sosha from Abbott Loop, and I know he's very committed to what Inlet View is trying to accomplish, so I appreciate all that. When we get to that discussion, ultimately, we have to focus on what's best for kids. I appreciate also the firearm, 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 firearm safety issues. I question that as saying, what, how are you going to teach kids to have the adult and their family lock up their guns? I don't know. There's a lot of issues there, I just want, I would support anything if there's evidence to support it's going to keep the kids safer, I support it, I just don't know how that's going to work, because the issue becomes outside of the school district in such a way that I don't know how we can do that the best, but it's needed. I'll throw out for just a discussion, as we look at budgets, I don't know what the charter schools are trying to do, or what they are looking ahead at doing, because they have their own budget, but that also makes a difference on whether they're in their own school, or whether they're in one of our schools. If we've got less students, if we have some space, our schools are safe compared to others, and I think that's just, that's an issue, but it affects their budget, and so it's going to be something for discussion out there. I will have to mention this briefly, my comment about Board Member Donley is, I always like to joke with him, because when I first came on the board with this time around, he's the one most questioning and challenging, why can't we do things differently, and I like that. So he knows that already. In line with that, I appreciate the fact he keeps bringing up issues, and the fact that he hasn't overreacted to my joke, so that's pretty good. I appreciate that. I hope we get into a discussion of God's and God, God rails, because the goal right now is to have kids proficient at fourth grade, and the goal is, the goal is not like it used to be, all kids need to advance academically one full year, and that makes a difference on how the programs will be, that makes a difference for those kids, that makes a difference to parents, and leaving that behind, to me, is a serious issue, and I'll challenge the issue of whether or not we're living up to the God rails. If we come out with a plan, how we're going to do it in three years, we're not meeting it, let's question and challenge the goals and the God rails now. I don't disagree with the concept, I just question right now whether or not we're meeting that, in line with that. I also want to say thank you to some of the PTAs. I know some of those are stepping up with some of the shortages we have, whether it's food service, whether it's other issues out there, they're really trying to do stuff out there, and they play a pretty significant role in the schools. They get really active, depends upon the PTA, but to me, that is really beneficial, and I appreciate that engagement for the success of kids. It's a sacrifice on their part, but I appreciate it. I've gotten a lot of feedback on that, and just real heartfelt thanks on that. And I'll yield the other three hours and 15 minutes and reserve that for next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. So Dr. Bryant, did you have any final comments?
No, I just wanted to wish everyone a great evening, and I wanted to note, it's about my two-month anniversary, and it's been a great two months with ASD, and I'm looking forward to many, many more months. So thank you for the support.
Thank you very much, and it's also Amanda's, but is it two months for you as well? Almost, huh? Six weeks? Almost, okay. So we're going to make it, we're not going to give up. So first of all, I'd like to, just a couple of announcements. If you are, board members, if you are planning on attending the Boardsmanship Conference in Fairbanks, you need to probably see Amanda sooner than later. I am, I mentioned, I asked about Ursa Major earlier, and I, I'm going to wait and see what the report says, but I don't want that to get lost in the conversation. Whatever the decision is, we must have it, so we, I don't want that to get lost. The resolution on firearm safety, safe storage, it's an education campaign, it's not just for being smart as adults, it's also kids being able to ask smart questions of adults. That resolution did move out of committee, we expect to have it on our non-action. Actually, it didn't get much opposition, but it will be on our non-action agenda next meeting. We also have our joint school board meeting, it's not until the 23rd, but you might want to make sure you, joint assembly school board meeting, and an hour before that, I think it's Andy and Carl will be our representatives on the safe school bus routes, and I'd also like somebody from the administration on that, on that committee as well. This first meeting is just a planning meeting, but as we, as we continue to develop the committee and the work of the committee, we need to have ASD, and I know that we're in education, we're not about building roads, but we need safe routes to school. And that was, that came up in January, I think, as a joint ASD assembly project. And so with that, that's all the comments that I have. I do really, my final comment is just that we have had a lot of questions, I mean, I mean, the board, the seven-headed monster has had a lot of questions, and every single question has gotten an answer. I try to track them, so please remember to put Amanda and I on your questions. Believe me, it will get where it needs to get. I'm not intercepting or interfering, I'm facilitating the answer to your questions. So please continue to follow our process to do that, because it really, it's really helpful to get the information and help get it to Dr. Bryant and his staff as soon as So with that, I'm going to just wish everybody a nice, lovely evening, and I'll see you back here in two weeks? Oh no, tomorrow, we have a ad hoc, I mean, tomorrow?
We do, the Ad Hoc Wellness Committee meets tomorrow at noon.
At noon, okay, great, thank you. All right, Member Jacobs, yes?
Adjourned.
Move to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Moving second to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you, guys.